Thank you, Kaudri. It's a lovely day in Tallinn. Wish you were here rather than being online. Okay, my name's Gordon McKenna. I'm the Standards Manager for Collections Trust and one of the editors of Spectrum. You'll be hearing from another editor. So first of all, what I will be doing is giving, for those of you who don't know Spectrum, a sort of very brief introduction about it. So here's a historic timeline about it. Before the organisation that I work for now existed, in the 1970s, there was something called the Information Retrieval Group of the Museums Association. That is usually abbreviated to ERGMAR. And what they did was create a set of different cards for different types of object. And I think there were maybe 20 of them for all different types, artworks, natural history, coins, books, and so on. And one of the things that became obvious is that there needed to be somebody to actually support these cards. So what happened was, in 1977, a new organisation was created called the Museum Documentation Association. Quite a few of the people who worked for it over the years actually were heavily involved in SEDOC. I think Andrew Roberts was a chair at one point. And so that was the thing. So then by the 1990s, late 1980s, they thought that there needed to be a data standard. So that was published in 1991. And at the same time, and a bit in parallel, they decided that there needed to be an actual standard for museum documentation stroke information management. And over the ensuing years from 1991, there's been five versions of Spectrum. So the main parts of Spectrum are the procedures, and these are what you might call the activities that museums need to do to manage their collections. There are sort of two classes of them. The first ones are these nine that are on the screen at the moment, ones for object entry, so when objects come into your possession, and that could include loans as well as acquisitions, acquisition and accessioning, location and movement control, inventory. Inventory is basically making sure that you've got the very, very basic information about all your objects in your collection, cataloguing, object exit, loans in and loans out, and documentation planning. Now, the importance of these in the UK, but not necessarily in the rest of the world, is that there's a general museum standard called Museum Accreditation, which is not run by Collections Trust, but as these primary procedures have been mandated as part of this standard. Here are the other procedures, and those include things to do with conservation and checking, valuing objects, and also insurance and indemnity of them, emergency planning, damage and loss, deaccession and disposal, rights management, reproduction, use of collections, collections review and audit. So although in the UK, some people may think that they don't need to do these activities formally, I think certainly outside the UK, it needs to be done. So what's in a procedure? Well, there's a definition, and that obviously is what the procedure is about. A scope gives you more in-depth information about what the procedure is doing, including things like, you know, why you should do it, what's the aims of it. And then there's the actual Spectrum standard, which includes things about policy. So you have to have a policy for each of the procedures, and that we pose a set of questions that you need to answer in your policy. Then there's a set of minimum requirements that you need to meet to meet the standard for the procedure, and also why the individual minimum requirement is important. Then we have two forms of a suggested procedure. The reason why we said to say suggested procedure instead of the procedure is that people need to create their own internal procedure for each of the individual procedures because, you know, you may have particular needs or not needs. So for example, you don't need to have a loans-out procedure if you never loan anything. And within each of the suggested procedures, there's a set of steps, and that is what you need to do, links to units of information, so those could be fills in a database, but may not be, and including advice on how to record information. These include actors, including user standard for a name, dates, user standard format, and various other ones where it's suggested that you should use standard term source. And finally, in them, there's a set of guidance notes, which include things like the form of an individual record. You then have, the other form is a workflow, and there is an example of the first part of object entry. And the workflow reflects these procedural steps, though it's much more simplified. It shows inputs and what to record. So where would you need to go to find out more? Well, if you go to our website, there's information about the procedures, and you can see the URLs there. The information requirements, these are these units of information. We also have a set of supporting resources, including information that is not written by us, so it would be external to us. We have books, including the Text to Spectrum as a book, and also software. When I say software, it's actually information about software, not software itself. For those who are interested to learn more, there's an online training event in June run by my colleague Sarah. This is aimed at non-UK-based museums. We do do training for free, but that is funded by a UK body, and it can only be to UK museums, if you want to have a look at information about that. So thanks. Are there any questions for me?
Well, I can see there are yet no questions from the audience. Maybe we can listen to other speakers and then we'll take a look at it again.
Okay. So do you have any questions? No? Does anybody in the audience have any questions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Can I ask a question of the audience, as they're not saying anything? Could you put your hand up if you knew about Spectrum before coming to this session? Put your hand up, like that. So that's everybody who knew about Spectrum in the audience here. Do you, have you got the need for Spectrum not in English? So would it be useful for it to be in, for example, German, French, Portuguese, Finnish? Would it be interesting to have it in Finnish? Yeah, we do actually have versions in various languages. Any more questions? Any questions? Ah, there's an actual question.
Could you tell us the procedure briefly about translating Spectrum to...
Well, yeah.
Sorry. I will just repeat the question for your question. Could you tell us more about the translation process of Spectrum to different languages?
Okay. Well, the first thing that a potential translator needs to do is to make sure that they have an organisation behind them, so we don't allow individuals to do it. And you've got to be aware that, you know, once you've translated it, you've got to be able to support it in your country. So, you know, for example, the Polish translation is supported by an organisation called NIMOS, for example. And the French version was done by Chin in Canada, and they support it. So once you actually have an agreement with us to do the translation, what happens is that the text of Spectrum is put onto a system that allows you to interactively translate it. I think Alexander might be saying something about that. Yeah. So that is that. Does anybody else have any more questions?
There is actually one more question.
Right.
Does Spectrum's functionality support involvement of people outside the museum?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Short and simple answer.
Yeah, I mean, yes. Actually, it's quite useful, because Kevin will be talking, I think, about this sort of concept of this. But it was never just internal to the museum itself. So particularly cataloguing and also use of collections as well. Okay.
So I also had another question. Maybe it's too early for this.
Go on.
But how do you see the future of Spectrum? Spectrum 6 and 7 and so on? What are the biggest changes out there?
Yeah, well, I think there's going to be some changes, particularly taking into account the topic that the previous question asked about. Hopefully, it won't be too much of a major change to Spectrum. There hopefully will be different language versions, particularly from Germany and also from, in Portuguese as well. And we hope that, you know, more people in the future will translate Spectrum into their own language. Okay.
Great. And now do we, now we move on with a presentation by Kevin Gosling.
Hi. Good morning, everybody. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, hi. Yeah. And if I could have my slides up, please, on the speaker view. Yeah. Great, thank you. Well, good morning, everybody. I'm Kevin Gosling. I'm the Chief Executive of Collections Trust, talking to you this morning from just across the Baltic in Stockholm. So I hope you're having a good conference in Tallinn. And thank you to the questioners from the floor who asked about the future of Spectrum and also the extent to which Spectrum can cope with contributions from people from outside individual museums, because that's really what I wanted to talk about this morning. We're involved in a process at the moment that we've called Rethinking Cataloguing, which addresses actually some of these issues. Now, Gordon's given a really good overview of Spectrum and how it originated. It's a very complicated document. The full text, including the appendix, which has about 500 concepts that we call units of information, the whole thing comes to about 80,000 words. There are 48 pages of rather complicated workflow diagrams. So the short answer to the question, will there be a Spectrum 6, is probably not in my lifetime. We did the last major revision in 2017, and it was a really complex process. We did a lot of consultation. We wanted to check that the standard still responded to the needs of museums, large and small. So this works for all kinds of museums and all sizes of museums. And in 2017, Spectrum 5 came out. As Gordon said, it's been translated into a lot of different languages. And so we've got Spectrum 5 in all of these languages that you can see on the screen. German and Portuguese translations are in hand, as I think you're going to hear later in this session. So if we start changing Spectrum, that has huge implications for not just users of the English version, but increasingly users around the world and translators of versions of Spectrum. And also, we have a number of software systems that commercially licence Spectrum, and there are a number that we call Spectrum compliant. And those systems have somewhere to park information that you might need to record when following any of the procedures. So in principle, the 500 units of information in the appendix, there is somewhere in all of these systems to park that. So again, we've got commercial stakeholders who, you know, the implications of us changing Spectrum are quite large. So it's not something that we do lightly. However, we are currently in the process of looking at the cataloguing procedure, because it's come to our attention that a lot of people really struggle with the whole concept of cataloguing. So we did some consultation last year, particularly in the context of decolonisation, which is a big issue in UK museums as elsewhere. And in particular, we looked at a methodology called Revisiting Collections, which was really a way of encouraging museums to work in a participatory way with people from their local community. And there was a lot of work done on that a few years ago, which was formally evaluated. And the clear result of the evaluation was that although a lot of good work was done in the moment, with workshops involving people from communities, generating a lot of knowledge and insight, in almost no cases was that information successfully added to museums' documentation systems so that that knowledge was captured and future-proofed. And since UK museums are being encouraged by Arts Council England to work in a more collaborative way, quite rightly, we can see a need for more support to museums to help them actually deal with the second part of collaborative working, which is the information wrangling and the knowledge management. So the clear message that came out of both sets of consultation that we did last year was that there is, in many cases, a kind of gatekeeper mindset, that museums regard their collections databases as kind of theirs. Nobody else who doesn't have access, you know, editing rights to the database can really add stuff to it. And there's a very kind of proprietary kind of gatekeeper mindset to information and interpretation of museum collections, which we felt was not a sort of healthy mindset. So we're really trying to do something about that. And we, we looked at this issue in more detail in our 2021 online conference, which was called Dealing with Complexity, which looked at a range of case studies and explored some of the principles around, you know, just why it is that it's just so difficult for museums to cope with complex, you know, multiple meanings, multiple perspectives. And in short, the sort of the summary from two half-days of discussion was, it's a bit tricky, which indeed it is, as I'm sure you'll be discussing in the SEDOC conference. So other impetuses are coming from, as I mentioned, the decolonisation. Ooh, is that not... Let's just see if we can go forward. Yeah, there we go. Decolonisation, which is really taking up, you know, is of huge interest right across the sector in many countries. This is just the cover of recent guidance that the UK's Museum Association produced. And that has quite a bit to say about knowledge management and how you might work more collaboratively to value knowledge that exists outside of museums. And this has been, you know, a real challenge to many museums. So even where the mindset is, yes, we want to work collaboratively, there are kind of practical difficulties, in many cases arising from the way systems are set up, or from, as I mentioned earlier, the kind of the mindset, the gatekeeper mindset, that kind of is wary of letting other people in to work with collections data. Yet another impetus came actually from Swedish museums, particularly in Gothenburg. So in 2017, the same year that Spectrum 5 came out, Sweden had its first museum law enacted, which has a very specific definition of what a public museum should be doing, with a big emphasis on knowledge building, which many Swedish museum professionals didn't see explicitly mentioned in Spectrum. And the National Heritage Board in Sweden funded a study that Gothenburg museums produced last year, which was really interesting for us, because although we think that a lot of the content is implicit within Spectrum, it's clearly not explicit enough for these Swedish museum professionals who were looking to adapt Spectrum. So there are kind of many, many reasons why we're looking at the cataloguing procedure in particular. And we have a process which is actually in place at the moment. So earlier this year, we released a draft of a revision to the cataloguing scope and policy questions, and asked for feedback, and got a really, really good range of feedback, some really thoughtful contributions. And if any of you were involved in that consultation and gave us feedback, thank you. We, you know, we're taking it all on board and working on revisions at the moment. One thing I should say is that we're not planning any changes to the minimum requirements, because as Gordon said, that is embedded within the UK's museum accreditation scheme, and it would be difficult for us to unilaterally make those changes without going through a whole approval process with the Accreditation Board. And we're also not planning to change any of the information requirements in the appendix. So we did ask if there were any that people thought were needed, and nobody has come up with any specific units of information that are lacking in Spectrum. So we think that Spectrum covers everything, but it's just not perhaps explained as clearly as it could be. So what we want to do is really tweak the emphasis, particularly in the introduction to the cataloguing procedure. And we produced a draft revision of the definition and the scope note, and put that out for consultation. And it's really about trying to nudge people and just encourage them to think a little bit more openly about cataloguing, what it is, why they're doing it, and explain the link to use of collections in a more explicit way. And I think if I were doing Spectrum 5 again, I would push the use of collections procedure well up the running order and put it after the nine primary procedures, because it's a really important one, and it actually addresses a lot of issues that people struggle with. But because it comes toward the end of quite a long publication, I suspect a lot of people never actually get that far in it. So we're really wanting to draw people's attention to the use of collections as a procedure. And we also want to really challenge the idea that there is a kind of an ideal or a finished catalogue record, that we're really encouraging people to accept that cataloguing is an open-ended process, and we really just want to try and get them to rethink what they mean and what they understand by cataloguing. So this work is ongoing. We're still sort of processing the feedback that we got from that initial consultation. We're also looking at the ramifications of some of the things that were said for the use of collections procedure. There are likely to be some minor tweaks to the suggested procedures and the workflow diagrams, just to make some of the linkages clearer. And we are hoping to release the next iteration for consultation very soon, I think possibly even next month. If you're not already signed up to the Collections Trust newsletter, if you go to our website, collectionstrust.org.uk, right on the homepage, there is a link to the sign-up for the newsletter, and then you can kind of be in touch and find out when the next version is put out for consultation, just of the cataloguing and use of collections procedure. And finally, it would be remiss of me not to just give you advance notice of our 2022 conference, which is going to be in person in Sheffield, wonderful city. And it's going to be looking at Rethinking Cataloguing will be the theme of the conference. It's a one-day event on Thursday, the 6th of October. Again, you can, if you sign up to our newsletter, you'll be the first to know when we start selling early bird tickets next month. And I hope to see many of you in Sheffield, where we can carry on talking about Rethinking Cataloguing. Okay? Thank you very much. Back to Gordon.
Thank you, Kevin. So happy to hear about those developments in Spectrum. And, well, I would very much like to go to this conference in October. But do we have any questions from the audience? I also encourage those who are online to post questions in workshop. I was just wondering, in the time where, when you all can post questions, I was just wondering, do you have any best practice examples about this open cataloguing? Is this working already very well somewhere?
Not that we've specifically written up as case studies, no. And I think that that was some of the feedback that we got in the consultation, that as well as the guidance in Spectrum, which has to cover all collection types, all kinds of museums, all kinds of situations, people would find it very helpful to have some case studies that show... studies that show some specific scenarios and how particular museums have worked through those. So that's definitely something that we will develop really in support of the revised cataloging standard.
Thank you. We also have another question from the audience. The EODM model uses candidate spectrum units of information. Is there a time scale for their eventual inclusion into Spectrum? And how do they relate to the changes required by rethinking cataloging?
Yes, so the EODM candidate unit, information units don't relate particularly to the rethinking cataloging work. And as I said, we're not proposing to change any information requirements because of the rethinking cataloging. That's really more about changing the emphasis and changing the mindset of readers through the introductions and the accompanying guidance. The short answer to the time scale for including those units of information into the next full iteration of Spectrum is that there is no timetable. We haven't, you know, we're still working through the change from Spectrum four to Spectrum five. And I think that it would be difficult for us to then come out with Spectrum six, which would then have implications, as I said, for all of the Spectrum partners. So we're kind of parking them as candidate terms. So the next time there is a revision, they will be included, but we have no time scale as yet for doing that.
Yep, Gordon has a.
Thank you, Kevin. Just to mention that Kevin has another appointment, so you will now disappear from the session. Okay. I next ask Sophie Walker from the BFI to first of all introduce herself and say what she's going to be speaking about.
Hi, I'm Sophie Walker. So as Kevin says, as Gordon says rather, I am the Information Manager at the British Film Institute. But I'm here because I have another hat on, which is my hat of, so I am a member of the London Museum Documentation Network. So I'm here to talk to you about a new toolkit we have for digital collections, for managing accessions, digital collections. Just out of the members of the audience that are here, who has a digital collection, an accessioned digital collection in your museum? Does anyone have you? Yes, anyone else? What's that, sorry? You do? Right, interesting. Okay, so not in your museum collection, but in your archive collection, interesting. Anyone else? Anyone else have an accessioned, what you might call accessioned digital collections? No one else, interesting. So you're used to managing your physical collections. But I think what we'll find in years to come is that more and more museums will be starting to acquire digital collections as we kind of start considering them as objects, as museum objects. So here, that's this toolkit is really to just, for those museum professionals. So it's a companion piece to Spectrum. So back in 2019, I set up a working group of museum professionals from London museums to, because we were all kind of grappling with the same issues. We're trying to work out why, you know, what, you know, we're all struggling with the same challenges that these digital collections. We were used to managing physical collections, but we were finding it very difficult to use Spectrum to manage our digital collections. So this toolkit is really for, it's a kind of compendium of best practice. The toolkit is a resulting, is a consolidation of our lessons learnt, offering some possible approaches and solutions for the growing number of museums starting to collect digital heritage. There's plenty of amazing digital preservation guidance available online, mainly from the archive sector. And the toolkit takes the digital preservation best practice as a starting point and tailors it to the needs of the accredited museum. So the toolkit is in partnership with the Collections Trust. So it's written by the London Museum Documentation Network in partnership with the Collections Trust, and we hope to finish it and publish it online by late 2020. So you can see here are some of the authors of the toolkit. I'm one of the authors, I work at the BFI. Also, we have Gordon, who you know from the Collections Trust, IWM, VNA, the Tate. So we've got some multiple different authors from different museums, all London-based, with the experience of managing different parts of digital collections and sort of bringing our knowledge together. So we have experience in collections management, documentation, collection systems management, and digital preservation. So you can see here on the slide, the toolkit is formatted according to Spectrum. So those people who are familiar with Spectrum, it's formatted in the same way. So you can see we have, we have a chapter for every, each of the 21 Spectrum procedures. And we also have, so you can see the blue boxes represent the primary procedures, and then we have the grey one, which is the non-primary. So we've tried to write a section for each, and we signpost to Spectrum. So we signpost to Spectrum when the procedures are the same. So there's quite a few examples of where the procedures will be exactly the same for physical and digital collections. But then there's perfect, there's lots of examples where the procedures will be different. So for example, with object entry, we talk about how to acquire, how do you bring in your digital collection virtually or via a physical, it might be on a hard disk, hard Yes, so the idea is that we try and take the digital preservation best practice and put it into a Spectrum format. So I'm going to focus on the cataloging chapter of this toolkit. And I want to talk to you about a kind of an approach for managing, cataloging your digital collection within a current, your CMS and your DAM system. So in the chapter, we talk about a new record structure, and we also look at units of information, looking at sometimes we reference the Spectrum units of information, and we recommend some new ones too. So this is probably a common record structure that you're used to. This is the kind of typical record structure you get managing in your CMS. You'd normally typically get a catalogue record representing your whole objects. For example, here we have a ship model. And then we have your separate, you might have a separate catalogue record representing each physical part, movable part. However, cataloging digital objects might need a different approach. Now, these are some examples of digital collections that we find in some London museums. So Flappy Bird, which is a mobile application that has been acquired by the VNA. There's Lisa, an Apple Lisa, a personal computer that was acquired by the Science Museum. In the Eyes of the Animal, which is an interactive game that has been acquired by the BFI Collection. And then finally, a digital photograph acquired by the IWM. So there are multiple challenges of documenting digital collections. First off, they could be digital, they could be physical, they could be a combination of the two. So for example, with our example of the, of Camp Bastion, which is entirely, is a born digital, it's on TIFF format, so that's born digital, it came in. You could have something that's physical, like the Apple Computer, or you have a combination of the two, like a challenging object, which is the In the Eyes of the Animal, which is both physical and digital, but also the concept, it's set in a forest, and how do you describe that within your object? It can be simple, or it can be complex. So, you know, there's a variety of different objects that can be acquired. They could be unique, so they could be a one-off art installation, or it could be mass-produced. So you could be acquiring a mass of digital objects, or you could be acquiring one. And depending on the workflow, you can, you really have to sort of manage that, consider those. And there's shape shifters. You can acquire one format, but it's likely, because of digital preservation best practice, you need to be able to migrate it on to new preservation formats into the future. So that is a challenge. Digital objects are dependent upon technology, so they don't always just live on their own. You have to render them understandable as a human, so quite often you need the software, the hardware, that all goes with it, and it may not be acquired. And if that were not enough, documenting physical collections, the documentation manager must consider approaches that not only describe the digital, the digital object for the members of the public, but also records the technical attributes of the object for the purposes of internal management. So there's a bit of a sort of a tension between not only having to describe the concept of the object, you know, what is it, but also describing how, you know, the information that you need to preserve it, the digital preservation information that you need to preserve it. So there's a bit of a tension there. So it is, they're tricky beasts. So just an example of an artwork, this is something that isn't in a collection, but it's something I picked off the internet, but I wanted to show you an example of how this might work. So you have here an artwork, Jarred Path Two, and it's on a TIFF format. So that you can see is a relatively simple object, it's on TIFF. So it might have two files that are acquired into your collection. You might have the metadata file, and you might have a TIFF file. So that's just two files that you have to manage, and they come into your collection and you acquire those. However, once they are preserved, according to digital preservation best practice, you need to create at least two copies or three copies of each of those files. So all of a sudden, you've got six files, digital files. And then when the TIFF becomes obsolete, then what do you do? Then you have to migrate it on to a new digital preservation format. So it's a, if you were to create a record for each of those, where would they go? Where would they sit? Would they go in your collections management system? How are you going to track these, these digital files? The harder now, then it gets a bit more complicated with something like this. Again, it's not in a collection, this is something that I've taken from the internet. It's a demo, it's a demonstration of a video game. You put the Oculus headset on, this Oculus Quest 2 headset, and you experience this video game where I think it reads your mind, it doesn't actually read your mind, but you can, it's very clever. Now, the acquired digital object is the thing that you experienced by the user. So you want to try and, what we're trying to acquire is the, what we've acquired is the demonstration of the video game. Now, what it appears, but the actual acquired digital components are the acquired metadata file, the software file, and the headset. So then, of course, again, you have these three, at least two copies are made of each of those metadata, the metadata file and the software file. And what do you do with the Oculus headset? Would you acquire it? Would it become part of the collection, or would you have it as a sort of working So my suggestion, how do you document this kind of material in your CMS? Now, my suggestion is that you would create a record for the whole digital object. So at the top here, you would have a record representing the whole concept of the work. So this is an example of what you might record at the top level. So you might record the artist, the creator, so Next Mind, you would record the date, you might record the date it was released, and any digital dependencies. What you wouldn't record at this level is the file formats, the very specific information about checksum information, you're not going to want to record that. Also authenticity information, acquisition information, because that would come under the, into the second level. Now, my suggestion is you record, then have a separate record, a child record, for each of your, each of your digital or physical components that come in. So they are required digital components at the point of acquisition. So that's the metadata file, the software file, and the Oculus Quest headset. And at that level, you might record, for example, the checksum. So you might record before, so for example, if your donor has sent you the metadata file, you'd ask them for a checksum prior to entry. So that checksum would then be generated off post-entry, and if it were the same, you'd know you've got the same file. And then the software file, we'd also have the information in there as well. Now, if you're using a DAM system, then you can also have, finally, the acquired software is ingested. So this is what it would look like once it's ingested into the DAM system. So once you've got your software file and your metadata file, they've been ingested into your DAM system, you would have a file representing the acquired metadata file, one for the software file. And then, once you've got your copies, we create your copies, your three preservation copies, they would also have a media record. So you have a link to the new format in there as well. So what you've got then is you've got a link between your information about the acquired digital file, and then a link to all the copies, so you can always access, which is the best render of that file, of that digital object. So here you've got an overview of what it might look like in the system. So the end result means that not only do you get information to manage the curatorial or kind of concept of the object, but you also can track all the unique information that you need for digital preservation. So you kind of got both in there, just to kind of, hopefully it'll, you know, this has not been tried out yet, but it would be interesting to see what others think and, you know, if you've got any ideas. I'd be really interested to hear what you have to say.
So thank you, Sophie. First, I have a small question about detail on a slide you had, where, I don't know if you can somehow get the slides again, or more back, yes, more, one more, okay, this one. You have this acquisition info tied to the file, I guess? Do, or why do you see it more tied to the file, not the whole?
Very good question. I... It depends on the... I think it depends on the type of digital object that you're acquiring. So I think, you see, this model means that essentially... This is a bit like a T-set in the physical domain, where you have a T-set, which is essentially... It's basically, there is no physical embodiment of the whole, if that makes any sense. So this would work really well, for example, in an art installation. So, I mean, I used to work at Tate, and there was one object which didn't actually have a physical manifestation. It was a line of people. So the concept, the whole object, was a line of people. Now, how do you catalogue that? Because there's no physical manifestation of that. So it's the same thing. It's like, the whole, you know, the whole catalogue record is a... Doesn't have a physical manifestation, if that makes sense. And so the thing that you want to acquire is the thing that comes physically through the door. So it's the source component, it's the digital files, but actually, on their own, they don't make sense either. So it's, you need that link to the whole, which is your kind of your concept, if that makes sense? Like the kind of what... It can be an idea. Thing is, it can be a physical thing. So if you were requiring, say, for example, you were requiring the Apple Computer, that has a, that would probably go at the top. So I think there's a little bit of deciding what your... You know, the idea is, it's kind of deciding what your object is, and what you're, and you're describing the whole, if that makes sense? That is the concept of the whole objects. And that could have a physical manifestation, or it might not. I don't know if that helps.
Oh, yes, that was very helpful. Thank you. Good examples. And what else? I was wondering, does, how does, or does this somehow also influence the CRM? The CDOC CRM model? Or...
We haven't, we haven't discussed... Yeah, we haven't had any conversations with CDOC CRM, but, you know, I can't imagine. So certainly something we could look at in the future. But yeah, we haven't looked at that. We haven't integrated with that yet.
And thank you. And we also, oh, yes, please?
If it's okay, I have a question. At some point, you mentioned the acquired metadata.
Yes, yeah.
And I'm right in assuming that you don't get with the actual thing? Like a documentation record file normally? I would be surprised if...
Yeah.
It's more like manuals or instructions which come with the thing? Or can you explain it a little bit?
I guess it could be. It could be anything. So a metadata file could be... So for example, it could be, like, so for example, it is a software. It could be the instructions for the computer to put together a sequence of files. So it's absolutely essential, because without that, you haven't got, you know, you're missing part of the object. But it could be what you might call descriptive metadata, which might accompany, for example, it could be instructions from the artist on how to set this up. So it could be either. It really is anything. And it could, yeah. So, you know, I think from an art world point of view, I think there's a, it's quite important to be able to describe, you know, somehow record that information as well. And I think it's, you know, it's an interesting one. You know, do you acquire that, or do you keep it separate? I would argue that those files, those accompanying metadata files, are absolutely vital. In fact, I think if you can't render the object without it, I would say surely you would acquire that too. But it's a question that people have to worry, you know. It's individual, isn't it? Everyone has a different approach to these things. Thank you.
PDF or whatever kind of document?
Yeah.
Of metadata which you put into your collection management system in certain data fields? So it's kept as files?
Yes, I think, but you know, if it can be understandable printed out, why not print it out?
Just the question.
Oh, apologies.
Yep, sorry. Just for the record, the last question was, do you keep, do you always keep a file? Or do you sometimes just keep metadata record without the file? Was it so?
But yeah, that's a good question. I guess it comes down to whether, what kind of file it is. I mean, if it's understood by a human, then you might want to print it out. But if it's not understood by a human, then you would... And it's, the computer is using it to make sense of the files, then there would be no sense printing it out. So I guess it depends.
Thank you. There is another question from the audience.
Could you please get more into the future part? The sustainable part of the file? You would somehow implement, and then the TIFF format changes and gets obsolete? Like, just what happens? What's the plan in the format that's obsolete? Or like, how would you change it? How would you keep it alive?
So the question was about the future of the files and the preservation. If the formats, for example, get obsolete, what do you do then? What's the plan? How do you preserve it for the future?
That's a really good question. It's in the toolkit, so we show, you know, it's good practice to create at least two or three copies of your digital file. But then, over time, we, as you know, these formats no longer can be rendered. And then, so this is the, you know, as I described in the presentation, it's, you know, then you can, you will then need to migrate those on to separate formats. So I am suggesting that you use the DAM system to manage those formats. Obviously, there are organizations who are paid for digital preservation systems, and that, they do all of that for you. So actually, you know, I think going forward, if you have got a massive digital collection, it makes much more sense to invest in a digital preservation system, because it will migrate all of them. It will do all of that stuff for you. Have I answered your question?
Thank you. We also have another question. Your model of, for DAMs, data includes full and component records. Are many DAMs, those digital management systems, able to record this hierarchical structure? Do you know?
Oh, what, sorry?
Are many DAMs able to record the hierarchical structure of this data?
Yes, this is built on a current... This is based on a DAM system that I use in our organization. And it's, the idea is that you have a media file, but then you can link children files to that one file. So the idea being is you have one media record, and then multiple children off that. So it does do that. You know, that's what DAMs are for. They can, you know, that sort of relationship between, from the whole and the part is the same as in a CMS.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? Okay, I guess we don't at the moment. And now I give the floor to Alexandra, who is just going to tell himself what he's going to talk about.
Hi. Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Gordon and Collections Trust, for having us here. We'll be talking about an update about the Spectrum PT, our Portuguese translation of Spectrum. My name is Alexandre Matos. I'm working in a lot of things, but I mainly work in a software company. And I'm also the representative of a group of colleagues that work in Portugal and Brazil translating Spectrum. We started to use Spectrum in Portugal in the first version that Gordon was talking about. This is one that we have at my faculty at the University of Porto. We have this first contact, and some years from this, we started to look about the translation of Spectrum. And we started to translate it in the version 3.2, but hopefully, the version 4 came in a time that we are only starting. So we have translated Spectrum 4. And we have some colleagues from Portugal at the beginning, the Science Museum of Quimbra University. And then we got the Secretary of State of Culture of the State of São Paulo at Brazil. And we build up together Spectrum PT, that for now, we have available, the version 4. Using this version in Portugal, we had also two tools. One that Juliana, that's here today, developed for assess quality in museum, in documentation of museums, using Spectrum procedures as a tool to do it. And we also provide some, get technical guides, guidance for museums in Portugal for the aid, Spectrum 4 procedures that look like this on that time. So we are now working on Spectrum 5. We are using SmartCut alongside with the other projects that are translating Spectrum. It's a partnership between our project and Collections Trust, of course. We are working as, with other colleagues, but with Portugal and Brazil colleagues for now. But we are bringing up some colleagues from Muzembeek and from Cabo Verde. We are hopeful that they can join in time. We have the goal to finish this translation this year, until the end of the year. We are, we have only, for now, done some specific issues at the translation. Using SmartCut, you can find out some of the files that are better translated, or most translated over there, and some of them are not. We have a communication tool that helps us to keep up with each other, because we, during the COVID times, we cannot get together. So we build up a Slack to talk with each other about the problems of the translation. So we are coping with a lot of issues. Firstly, the platform issues. The people need to get along with SmartCut and start looking and working on that specific matters. And now we are discussing, for instance, how do you use, because Portuguese is a gender language, so we have the guy and the girl always, and it's difficult for us to use the language with no gender. So we are struggling with this kind of issues around Portuguese and around other specific terms, because, for instance, in Portugal, the orthography of a word is different than in Brazil, and we need to cope with that as well, even though it is Portuguese, but it's different. And we are now almost 40 people that are looking, are doing these works. These are all their names, and I want to thank them, and I want to thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Do we already have any questions from the audience? I guess not yet. I wanted to ask about the implementing this Spectrum in Portuguese and Brazil museums. What has been the response so far? Or have you... And is it somehow obligatory there? Or is it a necessity for the museums? Or is it rather...
It is a necessity, but not mandatory in any museum. We work with, we are working now for Spectrum 5 with the General Directorate in Portugal and with the Ministry of Culture in Brazil to start delivering some training on using Spectrum. It's very hard, because it's, for now, it is a voluntary work of all of these people. So we have done, we have carried some initiatives like that of training and presenting Spectrum in Portugal and in Brazil in the last years. But even though, it's difficult without greater support like that. But some museums in Portugal are using it to improve their documentation processes. I know that also in Brazil, some, a lot of museums, some museums, mainly in São Paulo and Rio de Janeiro, are looking into it as well. Some specific procedures, like cataloging or use of collections, for instance. That is one of the procedures that in Portugal is being looked with very interest. But it's not a compulsory thing. You need to catch those guys by the quality of the spectrum, of the standard.
Okay, thank you. And now I will give up the floor to Monica. So, Monica, please.
Okay. Meu nome é Monica Hagedon Sauber. Eu sou de Alemanha e represento aqui, nesse caso, juntamente com meu colega Axel Lermert, do Instituto do Museu de Investigação. Porque o Instituto do Museu de Investigação em Berlim, na Alemanha, muitos anos atrás, concordou com o Collection Trust para trabalhar na versão alemana de Spectrum. E eu penso que na época, começamos com Spectrum 2, começando a traduzi-lo e localizá-lo, para fazer isso adaptável a diferentes formas de lidar com as coisas, comparado ao UK, ou adaptando também as situações legais, que você tem no Spectrum, também algumas recomendações. Nós adaptamos, começamos a trabalhar no Spectrum 2. Quando começamos, Spectrum 3 saiu. E então, nós mudamos para Spectrum 3. E nós completamos a tradução completa de Spectrum 3.2. E isso foi também impresso como um livro. E está disponível online e na versão impressa para todos os museus alemanhos. Eu penso que na época, nós impressamos 1.500 livros disso. E eles foram dados gratuitamente a colégios de museus que estavam interessados em ter eles. E nós tivemos vários pedidos. Então, isso realmente mostra que há interesse em obter guias e ajuda em formas de procurar, catalogar suas coleções. Bem, depois de publicar 3.2, e é uma grupo de trabalho, trabalhando nisso, juntamente com o Instituto do Museu de Investigação, pessoal daí, mais uma grupo de trabalho, uma subgrupo de trabalho da Associação de Museus Alemanhas. Nós temos uma grupo especial de trabalho em documentação lá, e lá nós temos subgrupos para tópicos especiais. E um subgrupo é sobre gestão de coleções. E este subgrupo é um grupo de voluntários trabalhando em áreas diferentes de museus, como arqueologia, como arte, como etnologia. E este grupo de trabalho, juntamente, trabalhou nessa tradução, translations. E depois que nós tivemos Spectrum 3.2 disponível, nós tivemos Spectrum 4. E nós continuamos e começamos a traduzir e trabalhar no Spectrum 4. Nós pensamos que é muito útil ter esse tipo de pequenos diagramas disponíveis. E eu penso que isso foi algo que veio de Alemanha e foi tomado no UK para as próximas versões de Spectrum. E enquanto nós estávamos trabalhando no Spectrum 4 e Spectrum 5 estava lá, então nós mudamos. Nós não publicamos Spectrum 4 como você fez em Portugal, mas em vez disso, nós dissemos, ok, porque agora já está Spectrum 5 lá, nós publicaremos Spectrum 5. Então, nós temos estado trabalhando nisso desde 2017 até 2020. So we have been working on this from 2017 to 2020. Most of the translation was ready, and then COVID-19 came. And this meant that since then, we tried in this period to continue to finalize, to do the editing, but because we are a working group where people are reeling, someone prepares a draft of translation. And then in the group, with people coming from the different sectors, we are discussing what is the proper adaptation for the German situation. And this, we realized, is not possible just doing online. You can exchange, you can learn from each other, but really have a two-days working group, working only online, at least we didn't manage to do so. So we said, okay, hopefully COVID-19 is over soon. And we had planned to have our meeting in January this year, but then this was again too early, so we have to schedule now. We have, we have most of the procedures and most of the text has been translated. So we probably need two more working group meetings, and then we have another, we need to have another, then probably three, four days meeting for the final editing. So I think that we might be able to have Spectrum 5 available by spring 23. So this is just because of, and in Germany, it's all volunteers working on it. It's not, it's no, it's a group of volunteers doing this in their space-time. So usually, when we meet, we meet from Friday to Sunday, and do the joint work then together. Maybe Axel wants to add something?
Not at this point.
Okay, okay, so that's the way we're doing it in Germany. So it's, and we have a website, which, where you find also where's available the German version of Spectrum 3.1, 3.2, and also several of the procedures, and all our diagrams, which we developed in the past. Yes, and usually, we organize annually a conference on collection management with a special focus on Spectrum as part of it. Also, this conference, because of COVID-19, did not take place in the last two years. There will hopefully be one this year. And then there's one next year, next year, we already know it will be in Wittenberg. And this year, it depends whether we will have maybe, maybe Wiesbaden, so. So with these conferences, annual conferences, we try to cover the different areas of Germany. So we move from one state to another state in order to have local people being able to participate in the conference and learn about it.
That's great, thank you. Do we have any questions from the audience? Okay, not yet. So I understand this new translation will be available on this website also, very soon?
Next year.
Next year.
Early next year, hopefully.
Okay, okay. So I guess if we don't have any more questions, looking at the audience, no? Then Gordon, would you please continue?
Okay. Are there anybody in the room or watching, interested in translating Spectrum into their own language?
Is it available in Estonia?
No, it could be done in any language, using the tool that Alexander is using.
So this tool is free to use, I understand?
Yes.
Yeah, it's Collection Trust providers.
The tool is a commercially used tool, it's not a, something we've developed, but it's free to use.
Okay. So if anybody is interested in translations, then they can turn to you?
Yeah.
And ask about, about tools and then the procedure, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, the, as I mentioned earlier, I think you need to be able to get enough support in your own country to actually do something. Like, for example, Alexander and other colleagues helped to make Spectrum essential in Portugal and Brazil. And that got, but it also helps to get funding from a local governmental body. So we're funded by something called Arts Council England, which is in turn funded by the government. So you just need to do that. The Dutch actually got a grant from their government to do it. And if you do that, you can do the translation quicker, if you've got somebody who's a translator to actually do the translation. We have actually a software vendor in the room, Norbert Kantor from Zetcom. Are there any countries in the world that are interested in Spectrum that isn't in, in the set we've got at the moment?
I think as far as our reach goes, to be honest, no. I mean, there's much covered with English already in Central West Europe. I think we are fine with the translations. And, yeah, we are not heading towards China or anything like that. So, no, I don't come up with a missing piece.
I can, I can just comment, for example, in Estonia, as we have this, mainly this one, one museum system in use, therefore, for this, we have mainly, mainly used this English version. So, so in our case, maybe this is not, it is not such a necessity in the near future to translate Spectrum in Estonia. This is how we feel, but, yeah.
What about Finland? Are they interested in Finland to have it translated? Finland, anybody from Finland? No?
No, I guess not.
Okay, well, it's a little bit early, but that's okay. Thank you very much for your attention, both in the room and over the internet and looking at Cardri. Are there any other questions that are coming up?
No, we don't have any other questions at the moment. But in case, if something comes up in workshop, for example, I will let you know, and maybe you can help to find answers.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time and your kind attention. Thank you, bye-bye.
So thank you very much, Gordon, and all the others.